I'll call the meeting to order. Can we have the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have the roll call, please.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Seaworth.
Here.
Ms. Stonebuck.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Huffman.
Here.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mr. Shig.
Here.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for being here for both of our meetings this evening. Earlier meeting, I think, went very well. It was good discussion. Good discussion. Okay, do we have any items to add or delete from the agenda? Okay, we will follow the agenda as distributed to us. We have the minutes from January. Any additions or corrections to the minutes from January 15th? Motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second?
Second.
All of us in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we don't have anybody signed up for citizen comments? Liz, did you have anything? Okay, it's good to have you. Okay. And we have some other gentlemen that come up on the agenda in just a few minutes. Okay, we do not have any public hearings scheduled this evening. We do have item number eight, updates, the comprehensive plan 2025 update discussion.
Mr. Chairman, of course, we just had a recent feedback meeting with town council and, you know, one of the big things today was to have you guys have an opportunity to have a discussion and share ideas, things like that. We may have another one of those. We find, you know, if I could get the mayor and the chairman to, you know, agree, we'll put another one of those out there, potentially for the future. Overall goal is to capture ideas, goals, and strategies for all, for both groups. Based on that feedback and their comments and the priorities that they have listed, we know where to put them in the CP 25 update and how. We may come back to you and ask for tactical mechanisms for us to achieve that goal, so we may do that. Brooke provided a copy of the current plan along with some note sheets for each one of you in a white binder. You can work through that. If you have a sheet that you write notes on, you don't have to keep it till the very end. Go ahead and give it to us when you get something written on one of those sheets and she can start incorporating that. The other thing that we probably need to talk about, we've talked about it a little bit so far, is do you think there is a need for a second public information meeting? And if so, if not, no problem, but if so, what type of location, date, time, format would you recommend? Or do you think that it would simply be a rebeat? You know, we've talked about that conversation before. Typically, when we vet PIMs in the past, multiples, we get about 80 to 85 percent of the same people and they mark about 80 to 85 percent of the exact same things on the exact same topics. So you guys, whatever you think, what do you think as a commission? What would you like for us to do?
What other, what other methods of stakeholder input have we done before?
So we have done a website-based survey through the town website and we put posts on social media for folks to come to the website and provide ideas. We did a social media survey one time, one time. We have not gone back to that well since. That tended to be a waste of time, really. It was just a waste of time. I think maybe we gleaned two or three actual legitimate ideas out of that whole swath of, you know, 350 some responses. So I think we're better served by if we do an electronic survey, then we get it out on our website. We can post links to that on our, you know, on our Facebook page and let people guide, direct them to that. But, you know, we keep probably four to six mechanisms for people to provide comments on any issue they want. You can come to the meeting, you can call in, you can come into the office, you can email basically everybody who's on a board or commission or who's a staff member. We have a bunch of ways. You can, there's a dedicated information email on our website that takes you to an inbox where we review that daily. So there's a bunch of ways that people can respond to us if they'd like to. Generating good, meaningful comments is a challenge a lot of times. People have good ideas and will get those ideas, but they don't really want to comment on, like, specific things or they may not have a comment at all. So we've used a couple of different mechanisms.
Do we ever, never send out anything in water bills? That way, we're sure they only get feedback from town residents.
We've done that. We even did a postcard campaign one time where we mailed a postcard to every utility address. Not the outcome that we had hoped for. We spent a lot on postage to send those out and we really, when we asked people what prompted your response, you know, or your idea to us about the comp plan, very, very, very few of them indicated the postcard was the reason why they contacted us, called us, or provided information.
Right. Well, the inserts in the, in the water bill are free, except for your toner and paper.
Yeah.
And you could just, instead of having a, a written response, because that's, that's a lot. And it's a lot in trying to collect that and, you know, sift through it.
I think we were very successful.
But you could, you could put something in the water bill that would drive people to either the link on the website or a Google form where they could fill out electronically, just to get more visibility.
Right.
If you do it electronically, is there a way to keep the same person from responding over and over and over again?
Yes. If you use a Google form, you can set it so that you only get one response from.
We get one unique response from each individual email address or each individual login. So there is a way to do that. Actually, Survey Monkey now allows you to do that. You have to set it up in a certain fashion, but there's a way to do it there, too, so.
But you can, I don't know of any that, that you can sift out geographic areas. And that, and that's the big, I mean, that was one big problem with the social media one is that you get input from people that don't live in LuRay or even in the state, for that matter.
So as far as the public information meeting, do you have an overwhelming, yeah, we need another one or no, we don't? I mean, what do you guys think about that?
I think we had a great one to start with and we used some other mechanism to get a second opinion from people.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Everybody mostly agree with that concept. We'll, we'll try probably a couple of different mechanisms. We'll try to do a utility bill. We may do another prompt. We'll try to get something special on our website where we can direct people to that location to where they can actually, you know, provide comment. And really, the comments don't have to fit these 11 categories. I mean, we're really looking for everything.
Right.
You know, you say whatever you want. We'll find a way to fit it in there if it fits in the comp plan, so. But, you know, that's what we'll do then. Okay, thank you.
Okay, other discussion on the comprehensive plan review for 2025? All right. We will move on then to the subdivision.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, in your packet, there's a two-page section of the county code where they recently adopted some changes to their ordinance about dome and your camping, which is really camping out in the county, size of single-family detached dwellings, a definition and size for tiny home dwellings. So those are things that they've recently adopted. So I wanted to provide you a copy of that just to kind of see, let you see where they're kind of driving. Most of these things are obviously out in county and in or near around campgrounds or in around some of their residential sites, but I do want to provide you a copy of that, so sorry about that.
Okay, sure. Okay. All right, now moving on to the subdivision requests. We are requested to review and discuss a proposed subdivision plat from Aaron Doffemire. The parcel is owned business B1. Currently contains a mixed-use facility on proposed lot three that includes a house and a commercial garage. And construction is planned for a new garage and auto sales building closer to US 211 on proposed lot four. We have, we have the survey. And again, I would mention that all the property here is owned business B1 and each of the lots that's proposed are an acre or two acres and the residue is 11.338 acres. And we know this is located at the intersection of Wallace Avenue and the bypass. We also have in our information that the structure proposed will be on its own lot with its own water and sewer connections, with a separate or larger commercial, commercial shared entrance at the property line, and that's all shown on the plat. Any other information that we need?
I think you pretty well got it summed up. We're just doing the best we can with what we have here. Fortunately, we have absolutely no use for a full 18 acres or just our business. So we're just doing the best we can with it. If you have any questions you may have.
And the big part is probably going to build a house.
Interesting.
Interesting.
Any, any other information, Brian?
Just, we had noted the existing drainage net there on the plat. Currently, they're using an existing shared entrance. Once the subdivision is created, you know, my recommendation in staff report and I think Brooke already talked to you about it, is to make sure that if there is a shared entrance or accessway between, say, lots three and four, that the deed that goes to record with the survey plat indicates that so that if they sell one of those, one or both of those lots in the future, those future owners won't have an issue with that. So the other lot, lot one, lot two, and the residue all abut Wallace Avenue so they can all have their own private entrance if they so desire. And you have a preliminary plat from Darren as well as the final subdivision plat coming through at the same time. Other than that, we don't really have any, any real issues with this. It complies with the, you know, we just don't see a lot of subdivisions in business lots. So kind of unusual in that respect.
I was going to say that, too.
We normally don't have too many 18-acre B1 lots in town. There's no real need for subdivision because it's already been done in the 40s, you know. So this is an unusual situation, but they've done a good job. The surveyor has picked up everything that we needed and has provided a good legend. And all of the lots are really good size, you know. I think the smallest one there is still over an acre. So it's good opportunities for future businesses or future other uses there on that property. So it is a little oddly shaped and it does abut a limited access highway for which you cannot get an accessway off of that due to the proximity of Wallace Avenue. So like Darren said, they're doing the best with this parcel that they can and still do what they want to do. We don't have anything else to add, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions or discussion? If not, are we ready for a motion? And can we put both the preliminary and final in the same motion?
I move to recommend approval of the proposed subdivision as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Seaworth?
Yes.
Ms. Stonebuck?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
So this will go next month, agenda for the town council. Then they'll vote on approval and then once we do that, we can, I can stand in the final class and then you take it to the attorney, then we'll grab the, the flat done up and then we can take it. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, you gave us a copy of this resolution from the council.
Council adopted that on the evening. I just wanted you to have a copy of it. It talks about some of the guiding principles that they're going to use and that probably most of them are already using and that probably most of you are already using in terms of evaluating applications for special use permits in relation to short-term rentals of housing houses. So the objective scoring component was not pursued and they stayed with a more subjective evaluation topics like we had discussed earlier. And they highlighted those in items one through five. Of course, it's not an exhaustive list. Any other consideration there under one eye? Any other appropriate land use or planning considerations or zoning considerations can be used by any of you or any of the council to evaluate future proposals. So I think that they were, it was a four-to-one vote to adopt the resolution, so.
So if everybody was doing that anyway, I'm just not understanding the purpose of the resolution, if that's what everybody was doing.
Okay, so in order to finalize the pause on the processing of the special use permit applications to give them time to figure out how they want to do it and what they want to do, if anything differently, the resolution is the end of that process. So this is what they elected to do, which puts it in writing. They may have been doing it already, but the resolution kind of puts it black and white about the things that they're going to actually, some of the things that they're actually going to consider. So it's the end of the pause process, I guess, for special use permit applications.
But it can still change.
Correct. At any point in the future, that's right.
All right, any other discussion or comments on that? Okay, are, are there other items we need to be brought up to date on?
None that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think we'll certainly be, we do have an opportunity to have a potential intern, a young lady who did a, she did a governor's school project in the council. She's doing, she's going to Pitt, I think, and I think she's really willing to work with Brooke to try to help sort of make some of this collection and maybe writing some of the narratives and things like that. So hopefully we'll have a little help, Brooke will have a little help to do that. Other than that, we're going to pull things from the last three plans probably that I have been continuing. We will add those back in. We'll just keep plugging the way out. Again, if you get a sheet or a comment in your comp plan that you would like to see something added, changed, or deleted and you have some ideas about that, please jot them down on that sheet, turn it in immediately because we'll just start building, Brooks will start building the framework for the map plan.
Okay, just one comment that I think of is that I've been around for a few of these comp plan updates and I think this one might be the most comprehensive plan update that we've had for a while. I looked back at the, the two previous to this one here and each one has a different tone to it. That probably has to do with different planning director being here or town, town manager, different planning commission members. Each one has a little different take on a comprehensive plan. But I think the way we're working on this one, especially on the housing component, it's going to be the, to make a pun there, it's the most comprehensive plan that we've had for a while. Any other comments on that as we go forward? Any developments around town that we need to know about?
We've got a couple of interested folks. One on Collins Avenue. They're looking at potential development out there across from the fairgrounds, that former people incorporated parcel that we looked at a few years back. Nothing concrete yet. That parcel still has the same challenge that it did, you know, when people incorporated, looked at it, you know, 12 years ago. So it, they are going to, you know, and that, we gave them that information right up front. We say, look here, right here is the things that, that stopgap the first one. So if you want to jump on these early, these are the ones you should take a look at first. And then still in negotiation for potential development up there behind West Main Water Tower, up there across from Jordan Street, that big track back in there. That's also is owned R5. So we'll see if we get those, either one. Off-site improvements will be significant on that one just due to the line size of the sewer. So, and they're going to have to buy a lot to get access to West Main Street.
I was just going to ask, where's the access?
They're going to have to buy a lot to get out of West Main Street.
Okay.
Because Pixel's Ferry is too small and Carolyn Drive is too small. So either one of those roads is built for that much additional traffic. So they're going to have to come to West Main. And so anyway, they're looking at a couple of options there. It's the same group, I think, looking at both of them. Duplexes are continuing to be applied for at LuRay Landing out there on Baker Drive. Getting ready to relocate a water line out there in two weeks to help some of the grades so they can continue that. And then, you know, they're, they're already got permits to build 16 townhomes on Ray Court, which is the new street that they built there. The Colts have a very long cable route. And they have, I think it's 14 or 16 more on that that they can build their townhomes. So we'll probably see some of all of those in F-25, or F-26, sorry. But that's what we have so far.
And the development at the art warehouse where that was?
Yeah, so did hear back about that. In any, we talked about earlier today, about federal and state grant funds and all that kind of stuff when you get into large or 4,000 project. So in order to be competitive, there's local buy-in for all this. So like, if you remember for the LuRay Meadows project, which was federal state funded, the town was advised that if they applied for a $700,000 CDVG grant, that it would, they would score better on their final, on their application and they would get the funding, which they did get the funding. Turns out that the $700,000 CDVG thing was not really necessary, but what was necessary in far as Department of Housing to be developed was then the town array was fully engaged in the project rather than just being a local government that oversaw the project. So again, it took us nearly two years to close that out, which that's difficult for a lot of local governments to go through that every time you want to have a federal state housing project, especially smaller communities that don't. especially smaller communities that don't have full-time people to deal with that. So we'll see what this is going to come up with. There will be some sort of local match from the county. I'm not sure what it's going to be. It's probably a water line to the, a bigger water line to the building, maybe something else, but they're going to come back to us with their handout, one, a little extra. So we'll see.
Okay. Any other items or any other discussion that we need to bring up? Our April meeting is April the 16th, is that right?
That's correct.
Late. The day after tax day. Okay. Okay. If no other discussion, we have completed our agenda items, so we will be adjourned.